Mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. That said, notice is posted in a lobby administration bill to go to the Board of Education.
Thank you, Mr. Calavano. May I have a motion, please, for the public meeting minutes of August 28th?
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Mr. Calavano?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Superintendent Ruski.
Thank you. Just want to review what we're going to go through tonight. I want to have a couple of individuals from Edison here tonight. Last time, we talked about the focus school status being removed. The school year was over, meeting right after the school year ended, so I wanted to bring some folks down from Edison to recognize them and the great work. We're going to get an ESIP update, talk a little bit about the Chromebook deployment and our special ed audit, as well as our HIB assessment that is required every year. So it really is an amazing feat of what was able to be done in the last couple of years at Edison, and to have the focus school status removed is a real tribute to all the very wonderful professionals in that building. At this time, I'd like to just recognize and have Mr. Fitzgerald and Mr. Mendez come up to the podium to speak a little bit about the process, and at the same time, if all those from Edison could just kind of stand with them up the podium, it's really very special that all you can be here tonight. Mr. Fitzgerald.
First and foremost, we do know that the Giants are playing, so half my staff is probably not here, and the other half is probably not here because we have back-to-school night, so they know they're going to be here until nine o'clock. But as I always start, I always say this, and it's something that I've carried with me since I've been at Edison, good, better, best, never let it rest till your good is better and you are the very best. And tonight, you know, I know you called me on July 24th, the day before my birthday. I don't think that was a good time for me to come before the board and actually say thank you. I just wanted to celebrate or go into my birthday celebration quite happy. But this brought me on June 30th, the greatest news, because five years ago, we started this journey that they call focus school. And when the state came in five years ago, they looked at us and they said, "Well, two-hundredth of a point, you are actually a focus school," and, Mr. Fitzgerald, we really don't know why we are here. Then after the first year, they really didn't know why they were at Edison Middle School, and then they began to look at our schedule, they began to look at the instruction that was going on in the classroom, they began to look at those instructional practices that we put in place that proved that we were doing what was needed, but more was needed. And my staff will tell you, I was not a happy camper. It's like when the Giants lose to Dallas Cowboys. It's, the next day is not a happy day. And so for the last four years, it wasn't a happy year for me, but, or happy years, but over the years, it gave me an opportunity to not only hold a mirror up to myself as an administrator, but it also gave me the opportunity to hold up the mirror to my staff and say, "Hey, you know what? Maybe there are things that we need to do in our building that can improve the learning environment and the instruction that we give our students." Not just the students that get it, but those that aren't getting it, and those were the students that we needed to reach. And when we began to look at the data, the data really informed where we needed to go and what students we needed to reach. And there's no way I could have done this. One person can't do this by themselves. The running joke is that Mr. Melendez has been with me now for nine years. He's been longer, he's been with me longer than my ex-wife. Okay? So at the end of the day, my right-hand man, my left-hand man, my sounding board, he has heard me say all types of things about this, and I would be remiss if I didn't give him the opportunity to speak about focus school and his four-year journey or five-year journey with this. Mr. Melendez.
Thank you for having us here today. I just want to say, like Mr. Fitzgerald said, it's been a really long journey, but I have to say that being in the focus school status has taught us a lot about ourselves, a lot about what type of interventions and those type of practices that we provide to our students, because as we all know, that's why we're here, and we're here to support them, help them to grow academically and socially. But we could not have done that with our teachers, our guidance counselors, Ms. Gogerty, who was one of the supervisors who helped us through this process. It was a tremendous journey. We really pulled together as a team, and I just want to thank everyone for supporting us, Mr. Ruski, and obviously the Board of Education, because I think in the end, we became better. We became a better school, and it's something that we will carry with us. So thank you very much.
Mr. Fitzgerald, can you just introduce everybody, please?
That's exactly what I was going to do. I have to me, to my, to my left, Ms. Sylvia Watford, Language Arts. I have Ms. Janet Wiggins, Language Arts. I have Amelia Morales, World Language, and I have Mr. Jeffrey LaFoon, the Guidance Counselor, or School Counselor, I can't say Guidance Counsel anymore, School Counselor at Edison. All of them have been on this journey with me. Not only do focus school, but Sylvia's been in the building for the last 12 years, Janet with me for the last 13 years, and Jeff with me for the last eight years. Amalia was in the district for a long time, but this is third year now, fourth year at Edison. That age is creeping up, that birthday got me. But again, to the Board of Education, to my staff, to the West Orange community, thank you for acknowledging the hard work and effort that this staff did. They did a lot of work to make sure that we reached those students that the state identified that we weren't reaching. And it does not stop just because we're off of that list, and I've made that perfectly clear to the staff this year, that there is still a lot more work that we need to do. This year, I'm proud to say that we have offered a world language, a second world language in Mandarin. Last year, we changed our computer programming into computer apps encoding. We also offered a STEM program. So there's a lot of changes that we have done with the four academic honors programs going forth. This year, we're also putting in a Lit Lab for learners that need additional help with their supplemental reading. So there's a lot more going on that the community needs to know about, but I'm hoping the Board of Education can promote. Okay? With that, Mr. Ruski, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Again, just want to thank all of you, and I know the staff. I stopped down the first day before the students came and thanked the entire staff, and I believe, I mean, that's from the bottom of my heart, I know the tremendous work and the changes that needed to happen is the key. You know, we were all kind of doing what we needed to do, and people asked you to look at it and do things differently, and that's not easy. So a compliment to both of you for the leadership and obviously the entire staff, because it really is hard to say, "Well, we need to do something different," and results speak for themselves. So thank you very much, and really congratulations. Tremendous feat.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Fitzgerald? I'd just like to add the thanks as well on behalf of the board for hard work both you and Mr. Melendez put in, and for your staff as well, because as they say, there's no "I" in team, and this was genuinely teamwork, and I know the community also appreciates that. You guys worked really hard to get us out of focus status. We've had to explain over and over again what focus status meant, because every time someone heard that, they want to know, "What is that, and why did that happen to Edison?" Or they never heard, they didn't know at all, until the notification came that you are now out of focus status. So we've had to explain that a few times, so it was very, very good, you know, that you guys came here tonight to be recognized, because we learned about it over the summer, and you're enjoying your summer, so of course, we expect you to be here. So thank you very much on behalf of the board, on behalf of my colleagues as well.
I just wanted to make a personal note. I just want to say my daughter's now attending Edison, and she's ecstatic, her friends are ecstatic, and we were looking, we were already looking forward to being back there, and I got to say, you two, Mr. Fitzgerald and Mr. Melendez, are like the dynamic duo. And you guys, I got to, you know, I know that it took a lot of hard work, it took courage, because you dug deep and you looked at things that needed to change, you looked at areas to improve, and you have a great team of teachers and counselors, and it's great to see Mr. LaFoon again, and I'm so happy that Ms. Morales is there, the other ladies, and Joelle's enjoying your class already. I mean, she's like, "Oh, I'm having so much fun in Spanish," the most I've had in years, because it wasn't that great in elementary. But so, just saying that it's, you know, and thank you for adding things like the code and engineering, you know, I advocated for those things. It's one thing to advocate, it's nothing to make them happen, then you've got the Makerspace and all of those, you're doing some really, really exciting things at Edison and things that any parent or child should look forward to. And do also want to give a shout-out, you know, to the, there were parents who were advocates some years ago who also helped to bring awareness for things that need to change, and they were, they, you know, worked along with you, and I wanted to say thanks to the parents as well, but well done, and looking forward to this year, and see you guys tomorrow night.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Take care.
I want to add one thing. I do want to give a shout-out to the West Orange African Heritage Organization, because every single year, they have a STEM program at Edison, so it's nice to see that maybe that was a Petri dish that set the wheels turning to now having a coding, STEM, and engineering program in Edison.
You're absolutely right.
So thank you to the West Orange African Heritage Organization and all the engineers that belong to that organization.
And they also provide tutoring as well.
Only in the elementary schools, not in Edison.
I thought you were going to do it at Edison as well, but they do the mentoring program there, too.
Elementary school only. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Enjoy the giant game.
Yes.
Mr. Ziggy, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, could you come up for us, please, and could I invite the board to have a seat in the audience? We're going to have a PowerPoint. Talk a little bit about an ESIP update, please.
Good evening, everybody. This is our ESIP update to give you a little background about ESIP, Energy Savings Improvement Plan, which I started to investigate almost six years ago, and finally, we're coming through to the end of our project. So tonight, the Honeywell team that is here is going to explain through a PowerPoint presentation our ECMs, our energy conservation measures that we took on, that was the crux of the entire program, and then we'll talk about the financing of where we are and how the guarantee is going to work and how we met our goals and objectives for the program. So Sal Corcione, Paul Peters, and Bill Hingluss, sir?
Hillsinger.
Hillsinger, okay, will be. So I'll turn it over to Sal now. I'll do the PowerPoint. You're on, Sal.
So I was the construct, I am the construction manager for this project, so I'm going to go through the construction update, and then I'm going to turn it over to Paul to discuss the savings. So if you can just go to the next slide. So the first ECM that we identified was an electrical lighting ECM throughout the district. The biggest component of that would be the LED lighting, which was done through all the buildings. LED lighting, great energy savings and better maintenance savings for the, for this district here. Occupancy sensors, same idea, save lighting by turning off the lights as people are entering and exiting the room, rather than leaving them on all night, all day in some instances. Vending mizers is very similar to occupancy sensors, but specific to vending machines in the district. Destratification fans are used in larger gym areas, multipurpose rooms, to create better comfort in the space and improved energy savings. And then the last thing that we did for energy, for the electrical end, was the management of plug loads, so copy machines, projectors, devices that are plugged in all the time and have a parasitic load. And this ECM has been completed as far as construction goes. We have a couple pictures here of the lighting in the gymnasium here at the high school, and that's a pretty typical occupancy sensor that you'll see in some of the rooms. The next ECM that we talked, that we'll talk about here are mechanical HVAC measures. We had domestic hot water tanks, so your hot water for sinks, showers. We replaced some of the older inefficient units with high-efficiency domestic hot water tanks. Same idea with rooftop units that provide heating ventilation and cooling. We replaced those units, there was a couple here at the high school, and then one at the Roosevelt Middle School that we replaced. Boiler burner controls to improve the fuel-air ratio that your boilers are using in the mechanical rooms at the schools. Premium efficiency motors were installed on hot water pumps, chilled water pumps, basically allow you to vary the speed as opposed to being just a, you know, on-off or two-speed motor. And then we refurbished a air handling unit here in PVW that was in rough shape. This ECM has also been completed as far as construction goes, and we are closing this one out actively. This is the rooftop unit that actually serves this space here at the high school, and then we did the rooftop unit serving the middle school library, Roosevelt. The next measure we want to talk about is the building management system. So you actually had an existing automated logic system through most of the buildings in the district, and rather than replace that with a Honeywell system, which we do elsewhere, we did here to get better value for you guys, was to expand this existing system, integrate the buildings that were not on the front end, and then bring on additional equipment to this ALC system. So there were boiler rooms, basically the admin building, a couple of the elementary schools, part of the high school and Roosevelt Middle School that we brought onto the front end. Large equipment where it was provided good value, energy savings, we brought those onto the front end. Demand control ventilation in large areas, basically allow you to ramp down the units when the spaces are not occupied or in use. And then we brought more visibility to how you're using your electricity in the building by bringing the meters onto the front end. So smart meters are now viewable from the front end, pull it up on the computer, basically see what every building's doing at any given time, and look at historical data, how the buildings have been operating over months end, years end, and seeing where you can improve efficiencies. This measure is also completed, and I think we've got a couple pictures of smart meters that were installed here at the high school. The fourth measure is building envelope improvements, so anywhere that you've got holes, cracks, gaps, where you can have air, you know, your conditioned air leaving the space, or you're bringing more outside air than you want to, so just sealing up doors and windows where you can, sealing up holes in the insulation or gaps in the insulation where you don't have a good joint at the roof-wall joint of a building. And then we insulated attic spaces where, I think there was a few buildings that we did that, one being the admin building, and then a couple of the elementary schools. And then also, we were able to do a lot of spray foam roofing, a lot here at the high school, a lot of sections that were in tough shape that we were able to repair through this ESIP project, and then a couple of sections at the middle school and Mount Pleasant. And that work was also completed, actually, end of last year it was done. We've got a couple pictures here. So that's what the insulation in the attic at Kelly Elementary School looks like, and we've got a spray foam roof at Mount Pleasant. Electrical, this was just high-efficiency transformers, older units here at the high school that were replaced, now with the new green ones here you see pictured. This measure has also been completed. And the last measure on the next slide is your combined heat and power slash emergency generator. So this is the only measure right now that's actively in construction. We are 95% done, so we've only got a few more items to do until the unit's going to be commissioned and started up, which should be happening in the upcoming weeks here. But we installed the 75 KW combined heat and power system here at the high school. Basically, you're generating electricity locally onsite, and as opposed to just exhausting the waste heat, we are now utilizing it to supplement the domestic and heating hot water used here in the building at Conforty. I'm not sure if anyone saw, but there's actually a large generator that we installed, 500 KW, that will back up the turnoff area, so your cafeteria, which, you know, can be used as a shelter area, and then we've got the, a lot of the equipment, lighting, electrical equipment, kitchen equipment, HVAC equipment that's on that backup. That's actually located right next to the fields, the bubble there. And then at the middle school, Liberty Middle School, we were able to back up the freezer there with a 35 KW generator. Like I said, 95% done. We've got a couple pictures here of the units. That's the CHP on the left in the Conforty boiler room, and our generator outside here near the fields. I'm going to turn it over to Paul to discuss the measurements and verifications and the energy savings.
Thanks, Sal. First I want to say is congratulations on your STEM program. Myself, Will, Sal, we're all mechanical engineers, New Jersey-born and bred, so it's great to see that's in the schools. Go to the next slide. So what have we done so far? And Sal was basically taking care of the delivery portion of the product, project. Now we're moving into the measurement verification. Okay? So the measurement verification starts as the measurement, the ECMs or conservation measures get completed. So we've been onsite already, doing measurements, electrical measurements, pre and post. We've been reviewing ASB drawings. We've been basically doing some commissioning, making sure that the, what we said we were going to install, we installed. And we basically document this stuff, and we document any adjustments that have to be made, if it's building schedules, if it's temperatures, or if it's actually equipment that we, we're going to put one piece of equipment in, we actually put another piece in for whatever reason, that's all documented. What we have to do is, as Sal and the delivery team completes the ECMs, we're going to document all that stuff, and we'll basically do the same thing, pre and post-measurements. Give the next one? Oh, and one thing you'll get, once that's all complete and we start the guarantee period, within 60 days, you'll get a post-install report from Honeywell, and we'll deliver that to the district. So we've been, as the project's been going on, we've been gathering utility bills, okay? And we try to gauge where we are. So what we did in this slide, we're looking at your base year. So with agreement with the district, we established a base year, this, in this project, it's 2013, 2014, and we compare it to the next previous year. We basically light up the months. I believe this goes from, yes, goes from January to Ju, it's actually July to June, but we only have six months here, January to June. As you can see, we're pretty much right on schedule. We have about 20% savings in our construction period. We figured that we would probably be about 14% at this point, so we're a little bit ahead of our schedule, which is good. If you look at the previous six months, we were about 13%. So that, that rate is increasing from 13% now, we're at 20% for the, basically the full year. So that's where we are as far as savings in the installation period. Okay, next slide? Okay, so the, I guess the big question on everyone, everyone's mind is, how do we, how do we do measurement and verification? Okay? We break it into two groups. Electricity, okay, which is we're talking about kilowatts or KW, and then the second group is natural gas, which we talk about thermes. So electricity is easy. We could basically take a meter and we could measure the difference from pre-kilowatts to post-kilowatts, and then we could use our engineering calculations to basically calculate the savings. On the gas side, it's a little difficult, because we have so many measures, for example, CHP, building envelope, roofs. We actually have to look at the utility bills themselves. Okay? So we actually look at, from base year to our guarantee year, the amount of thermes the district's using. But we're also going to correct. So for example, if the, if there's a warm year, a warm winter, and you don't use a lot of gas that winter, Honeywell can't take credit for that. Oppositely, if, if we have a real cold winter and you're using a lot more gas than we initially thought we were going to use, we kind of get a credit for that. So it's a balance there. But those are the, specifically, those are the two ways that we do our measurement and One more point. So after that, after we look at our first full year of information, we'll put together a guarantee report, okay? And we'll come back and we'll present that to the board and let you know where we are as far as the guarantee is concerned, if we're making guarantee or if we're missing guarantee. In New Jersey, since ESIP started, we're about 30 cents, 30% of the positive in making our guarantee. So we're, we're a little more conservative than most companies as far as our energy, our energy savings. And we'd rather, you know, we'd basically, you know, rather be conservative rather than being too aggressive. Okay? So we want to basically under-promise but over-deliver for the district. And I guess if there's any questions, we can answer them.
Why don't we do what we normally do? Board can ask questions, and we'll open up the public for questions.
Sure. Thank you, first of all, for coming in, all of you and Mr. Ziggy. I know we've been asking for some time for an ESIP report, so I'm glad to see you here. I know this has been a long time coming, as Mr. Ziggy says, it's been about six or seven years, and we no longer have the Green Schools Leadership Institute, but there are other programs for the New Jersey School Board that support this. Just have a couple questions. On page four, for the ECM2, the mechanical, you mentioned that you replaced the domestic hot water tanks. I just want to confirm that that's in all 13 buildings?
No, it's not. It's in select buildings that we identified, older inefficient units, units, so.
Okay. And the same thing for the RT, or the rooftop units? It's just specific buildings?
Yeah, really, the lighting is the one that was throughout the district pretty consistently, and then for all the other ones, it was specific? Yeah, we identified the older inefficient equipment, so it wasn't just a catch-all, one-size-fits-all solution for the others.
Okay. I'm glad to see that you're 100% complete in all the ECMs, except for the last one, you're at 95%. When, when will that be completed?
We're expecting to be done with that, I would say, mid-October the latest. So we've got another month's worth of work, if worst-case scenario. That one required a lot of work with the utility company, which is kind of, we could push it as much as we can, we could have you guys push it, but it's kind of like fighting City Hall, so worst-case scenario, though, we should be done in October, end of October.
Yeah, it took us four months to get the public service to increase our gas pressure to the one unit that services the Tarnoff Building. And today, believe it today, they finally did the verification, and the gas is back on. So hallelujah, that was a big push, and that was the big holdup for that. So we're very close now, and as Sal said, probably within the next four weeks, we should have them all started up and get it commissioned.
Okay, I am happy to see that, because as everybody knows, we've been watching CNN and other, and the Weather Channel and other news outlets, and all the hurricanes hitting Texas and Florida, and that, the completion of that will help us here in West Orange and Essex County, as we are one of the identified shelters for Essex County.
Yeah, the push is on there to finish that up, and yeah, we, we have all that in mind, so I think we're, as Bob said, though, I think the utility knew we had the meeting today, so they wanted to get it done for us.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. I have no further questions. Thank you for all your hard work. Mr. Robertson?
First of all, thanks for the hard work and information of all these projects. And I'm sure Mr. Schwartzbaum will know more about this than I will, but how much of this 20% overall energy savings reduction that is, has factored in the prices in the energy market that declined during the same period?
Yeah, you want to take that? Measurements here are just the, that's not in dollars, I believe, that slide.
That's only in EDA.
Yeah, so that's in the units.
Right, but you use utility bills, particularly in regard to the natural gas, and if utility costs had been declining during the same period, I want to know how much of that has factored into what you're attributing to the overall savings?
That would actually hurt Honeywell. And the reason is that we look at, we guarantee, we guarantee energy, okay? So when, when the price comes down, okay, it hurts us as far as the dollar guarantee. But when we adjust, we adjust thermes based on, like I said before, weather, building utilization, occupancy, things like that. So as, as the price comes down, like it did or has, it basically, it hurts us, and it gives us less margin on our guarantee. And that's why we're basically conservative in our approach of calculating guarantee.
To explain the guarantee for public, which we kind of did right here, but the follow-up question is, does the 500K generator, does that do the gym and the cafeteria as well, or just the cafeteria?
Just the cafeteria and the equipment that serves that space.
Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Schwartzbaum?
Thank you. A couple of questions. Can you just, oh, sorry. Can you talk about the backup generators? Which buildings now have capacity if we lose power?
So the 500KW serves the Tarnoff area that I just spoke of, cafeteria and the equipment. The CHP for Conforty backs up a lot of the IT infrastructure.
Yeah, all of the IT.
Yeah, all of the IT infrastructure. That was the whole goal, to get a backup generator so we can continue operations with servers and so forth. The one for the cafeteria was strictly for us being able to be a shelter, fully operational. So air conditioning, heat, kitchen operations, the whole bit. And the third up at the Liberty was for the freezers and refrigerators. Our commodities for the summer are kept in two places, the Tarnoff Cafeteria and Liberty. When we had our last power failure back with Sandy, we lost about $40,000 worth of commodity. That was the easy part, it was cleaning it out that was the tough part, okay? So we won't have that in the future. We, we guarantee that those will be the places to store it. So the three generators served the purpose there.
The other schools, do we have backup generators at all?
We do not.
Even, not even for the refrigerators?
Liberty has one, that's just for the lighting and the hallways, but nothing else for the refrigerators. And what the food service does, they clean those refrigerators and freezers out in the summer and takes whatever's left over and bring it to the high school and Liberty for safekeeping. So we didn't need generators in the other schools.
And the backup generators are, are using natural gas or gasoline?
Natural gas.
Natural gas, okay, fine. Wanted to just talk about on slide number 15. So you, which is the kilowatt hours, where you have for the six months of 2013, 14, and then 16, 17. So you talked about, in one aspect, you utilize, you go to the meters and see what the actuals, what, what the meters are reading. And then when you talked about natural gas thermes, you talked about going to the bills and looking at the billings. Why aren't we looking for electricity at the, at what our actual spend is through our electric provider? As well as, as well as looking at the meters?
Correct. So when we, when we do the guarantee, it's, it's, it actually, the science is there to where you're just as accurate as far as doing the calculation. Because like I said, if you're replacing a 30-watt bulb with a 15-watt bulb, watts are watts, and you could actually do that measurement, okay? And then we could, then just multiply that by time, gives us kilowatt hours. If in thermes, it's hard to do that because, and I'm going to get back to your question, thermes it's hard to do that because we have to look at the whole building, we can't actually put a meter on thermal, we have to look at the bills. In our past, when we've looked at the bills, the actual electric bills, we're actually, like I said, we're, we're conservative by nature because we don't want to miss guarantee. Honeywell will pay if we miss, but we don't want to miss. We're actually better than what we actually calculate. Because we do put D-rate factors into our calculation and, and...
You would have no, if that's the case, that you're, so you would have no problem taking your mathematical calculations, going to the actual bills, and then also showing it?
Absolutely.
Because, you know, to me, I, I'm not doubting the calculations, but it becomes very, it's a complex, I, I like to keep, I subscribe to KISS, keep it simple, that rather than rely, go into a calculation of what were the actual kilowatts versus this, and then it becomes a, a more complex mathematical equation, which I'm sure we all can do, but it's, it's very simple, just going to our actual bills from our electric, from our contract provider, and we could get that and then look at that.
I totally understand. And with that going and looking at the actual bills, it's, it's also a labor issue. I mean, someone's going to have to go in there and actually look at the bills and do the comparisons. So the cost of the guarantee would increase. So we want to basically give, we want to basically give the lowest price to the guarantee, okay? And knowing what we've seen and Honeywell's experience doing this, the option A for electric is just as reliable as going to the actual bills.
I'm not going to question that, but the cost to actually pull bills for 12 months, I'll, I'll agree to disagree. It's not labor-intensive. I think in a simple Excel spreadsheet could be pulled down, but, you know, and if not, you can send it to me, I'll, I'll do it. I'll, I'll, I'll spend the, what I think most probably is an hour or two to do it. But if you're giving a guarantee, again, I'm not questioning the guarantee, what I'm questioning is, is very simply, actuals are actuals. I mean, that's usually the simplest thing in anything, you know, one is a, is a calculation, the other one is a, is actual. When it comes to thermes, I would ask to see what your adjustments are, because you're talking about occupancies and, and temperature days, where, again, same thing. What, what were, what was our usage in the base period? Then what, what is our actual usage? And, and take it from there. And one of the, one of the questions I would have is, I would like to see the breakdown, what your adjustments are for your occupancies and warm days and anything else that you're doing in order to come up with an adjustment factor.
Yes.
Plus or minus, if it's in your favor, God bless you.
Yes.
Okay, but I just, I think...
And I was, I was just going to say that that's going to be given to you. After the guarantee period, the first-year guarantee is over, you're going to get, we're going to sit down, we're going to have a meeting. You represented the report, the guarantee report of where we are. I don't know, we could probably get the district a sample from another project we've done, that so you could, you could take a look and see the detail. The reports, we've got plenty of buildings in this district, 11. So it's, it's going to be pretty thick, but we could, we're going to give you all that information and how we made those adjustments.
Agreed, but the executive summary will be, the, in the initial proposal, there were, I don't recall exactly what the kilowatt hours were, but the usage, so therefore we'll take that. And, and when did you complete, when were you 100% complete on the electric? Because I noticed the 95 is more, is the backup generator. So when it comes to the lighting and all the other items that would affect electricity, kilowatts?
So, how was that? So it was done, we, we did building by building, but I would say at the beginning of this year is when most of the buildings were done.
January of 2017?
Yeah, plus or minus maybe a month or so.
Okay, okay. So then we'll have, we'll have good six months of actuals.
Correct.
And then you'll, and part of, part of your analysis that you're going to provide us, I believe in the, as I recall, I'll go back to my notes, that it was annual savings of $759,000, that you'll, you'll show us where, how we got to that, whether we achieved it based upon a usage basis, not based upon what the cost of electricity is. One of the things within the district, I think, we put out to bid, and I believe we saved the district, just on a rate basis, about $150,000, if I recall?
Right.
So that's not, that was just simply because we switched providers. So when, when do you think you'd be able to get a snap? The, your, your analysis of the annual savings?
That'll be at the end of the, you know, by contract, it'll be at the end of the, the first-year guarantee period.
Okay.
You'll get that, that complete report and we'll do a presentation to the board again.
Thank you.
As soon as completion, so.
So we look out in November, maybe November 1st?
Mid-October, you said you complete the, the last portion?
Yeah, and then, right, and then project, project closeout, commissioning with the architect, engineer, so we're saying, I think November would be the latest for the start date of the guarantee.
But just, just, just so I, just so I can verify, that the 5% that's remaining is really not related to energy savings, but it sounds like it's much more related to backup, backup generators, vis a vis PSC and G, whoever's providing the, the natural gas lines as well as the, and the hookup of the generators.
Correct. And as the contract is written, the guarantee period starts from when we're 100% complete. So that November 1st looks like the date, so that's when everything will be compared to 2013 bills and, and numbers that we had our baseline. So that will be next November when we'll have it. Am I correct in saying?
Right. I did want to add, though, for the combined heat and power, though, there are savings because you're, you're generating electricity locally and then you're utilizing the waste heat. So that generator does actually have savings.
So therefore our actual usage will actually go down?
You'll buy, you'll be buying less electricity from the utility and generating more locally here.
Thank you, Mrs. Lab.
Hello. Coincidentally, on our last agenda, we had a cost under run of about $48,000 on one of your projects. I don't know, change order three, whatever that might mean, I don't really know. But do you have any anticipation of further under runs?
We've utilized everything for additional work as directed by the district.
Yeah, we're, we're just about, we're done. We don't anticipate any other change orders at this point.
Okay. In, when you came to us back in 2015, you provided a lot of documentation to us, one of which was March 10th, 2015. We were told that the electrical savings would be 4.1 million kilowatts. The document that you gave us today for the six-month period following the baseline has approximately a savings of 946,000 kilowatts. Assuming if you were double it for a year, that would be 1.8 million kilowatts. When will we realize this 4.1 million? That was discussed in 2015.
So is that, this is kilowatt hours?
Yes.
And that, is that, is that kilowatts on there? Or is it just...
Yeah.
We'll have to review the scope, because I'm not sure when this is from, if this is the most latest and greatest scope, or if there was a, a different scope of work that was reflected.
The document lists March 15.
The CHP will have electrical savings as well, so that's not reflected in this analysis.
I'm sorry, to see what?
CHP, the combined heat and power here, the generator?
That would have kilowatts as well?
Correct, yeah.
That would be the differential of approximately 2 million kilowatt hours? Is that what we should anticipate?
You got to remember, this is during your construction period, okay? These are just raw data bills that we've got, okay? We still need to go through the bills. Our measurement verification specialists will look at the bills and scrutinize them. Sometimes there's double billing, sometimes there's, the utility will basically estimate the bill and not read the meter. So this is just to kind of give us a, a gauge of where we are. And we're, the district is certainly moving in the right direction. Until the end of the guarantee period, okay, that's when we'll know exactly where we are. But it's an ongoing process, it's, that's already started. So we're gathering utility bills, we're basically pre and post-measuring. Our specialists have been to the building, at least once, I know Frank's been here before, inspecting the measures. As we get into that post-construction period, that's 60 days, we're going to look and see and make sure that everything that we said we were going to do is going to do, that, that we're going to do. As far as the measurement and verification team for Honeywell, they kind of work autonomously where they, they're basically a separate entity checking our work. So the engineers start with the energy savings calculations, delivery team installs, and then the measurement and verification team comes over and, and looks at the energy savings. And then as they monitor, as they, as they continually monitor, and if we see there's going to be a, a shortfall for whatever reason, we're going to get ahead of the curve. So that's why we're going to be looking at, at this, you know, each month for the, the following year, or the following months of the guarantee year. So once we start, the clock starts in November, we'll constantly look at, at where the project's going.
Laura, to simplify that? If the 4 million hours, the 4 million kilowatt hours is what they started as our baseline, that's what they got to meet. So going through all that, how they get there, whatever, if that's the number, and I'm not sure if that's the number or not, that's what they have to guarantee, so.
That was the number we agreed to. I look forward to that reconciliation.
That's the number that they're going to have to meet.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you. Okay, so let's open it up to the public, if any, is that, if anyone, oh, okay. Andrea, please come forward. Thank you. If you would please come to the microphone, because we're taping for television, so that everyone can see and hear you. If you could please reintroduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Andrea Khan. I'm with McMannamann, Scotland and Bauman, we're bond counsel for the district, and we assisted with this project. And I wanted to point out that perhaps some of the questions can be answered as part of the process for the ESIP, because after the final construction period is complete and commissioning is complete, the district is supposed to hire a third-party verification party, which can assist you with making sure that the plan has been met as promised. And they can probably specifically be directed to answer the questions that you have concerning the amount of, of actual savings that was required by the plan. That has to be a separate, independent party, can't be a Honeywell party, it can't be a contractor that's been hired to work on the project. It can be the, either the auditor that you hired to kick this off initially, or to the party that you hired to do the verification of the plan prior to adoption of the plan. So I, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because when you talk to that party, you may want to raise those specific questions that you have and, and have them help you to answer them.
Ms. Khan, the board has questions, if you don't mind.
Who, the third party that the board had retained initially?
I think I do. They reminded me that it was DLB, and I did remember that only because I think I used it as a form recently for somebody.
Okay, so if you could just forward. John, you have, you have their contact? Okay, great.
Okay, we will now open it up to the public for comments.
If anyone in the audience would like to come up and ask a question, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, and there will, there's a three-minute timer on the clock to allow everybody a chance to ask a question. Now, this is specifically on the ESIP update. If you have any questions about the presentation just made, please come forward. Okay, thank you. Seeing none? Thank you very much for coming in.
Thanks, gentlemen.
We look forward to seeing your post-construction report. Thank you.
Have a good night, guys. Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Okay, just moving on with the agenda, we're going to talk a little bit about the Chromebooks, one-to-one deployment, update, et cetera. As you know, we have been moving forward, having the students taking the Chromebooks home. We worked on the middle schools initially and then started with the high school today. Very, very smooth operation at the high school today, a lot of people involved to make it happen. And the conversations with the students, understanding. I know I was up to high school this morning while the deployment was taking place and very excited about, the kids' excitement to have the, the Chromebooks. The middle schools, we just had one issue at one of our middle schools. They did not send home the mouse with the other materials, and I learned of this about four o'clock today through an email. And so we will handle that situation in the next couple of days to rectify that. But please understand that anytime you do something where you're involving 2,000 high school students and you're involving 1,500 middle school students, we just have to work through the process. We have to make sure that we help students understand, more importantly, help the parents understand. And so there's a lot of individuals that parents can contact and get help with the rollout. And if there's any concerns whatsoever, the best place to start is in the building with the principal. If he or she is not capable of handling this, in this case, it would be the four secondary principals or the assistant principals. Certainly, there's the entire tech team that's assigned to make sure that we answer any questions that we need to answer. We anticipate everything being taken care of by the end of this week, which is Wednesday, being that schools close Thursday and, and Friday. So we are looking for that, and we're going to work with students. And we know from other districts that one of the biggest... And we know from other districts that one of the biggest issues is that the Chromebook does not come back to school in the morning charged. We will handle that, we will work with students, we'll work with parents, and we'll certainly work with the staff to make sure that the Chromebook is available and ready. In the future, we'll be talking about looking in our classrooms a little bit differently and putting charging stations in and different things that will assist students, whether it be before school, during lunch, after school, et cetera. So we all know that mistakes are made as far as forgetting to do certain things and student coming in and charging it at the station is certainly going to be evaluated down the road. So I just wanted to give everybody an update on the Chromebooks. I'll have a better update after this week is over, and certainly will share that. Again, any concerns whatsoever with the Chromebooks, please start with the building principal. And if he or she is not capable of answering the question, they will refer the question to make sure the parent gets the answers that they need.
Mr. Rosky, this is a great initiative. We started on this several years ago and through a couple of different superintendents. We talked about one-to-one devices going way back, and thank you to you and the administration for getting it done. So really do appreciate all your hard work on this. I do have a couple of questions. You said you won't have an update for us until, you know, everything's really rolled out. But in preparing your response, if you could just answer, I've had a couple emails from private school parents who said that in light of the fact that we provide transportation, would we think about providing Chromebooks to private school students? You don't have the answer today, but...
No, I can answer you because we do have to provide technology to them.
Yes.
So there's a specific amount that's assigned to them, and they determine what they're going to do, whether they're going to have a one-to-one is completely up to them, not us. We just purchase it for them and then we get reimbursed.
Okay, that was the one question. And the other question a parent asked me, that in their experience in other private schools, the parent bears the cost of the insurance, or at least a part of it? Is that something we can look at?
We, right now, we have the, that was all built into the plan. So we have the insurance to take care of it, unless there is serious neglect, then that would be a different story. And that's all laid out in the handbook.
Yes, yes. And the handbook is very thorough, thank you. And my last comment, you actually answered, I was going to ask about the locations of charging stations to make sure every building has several around the buildings for students to charge, because you're right, they're going to forget to charge their devices overnight, and they'll come to school the next day not able to participate. Thank you. If my colleagues have any questions, I'll start with Mrs. Lab.
Just a couple of questions first. How will the tech department handle all of the potentially new issues that are going to come their way from all these new devices?
We have a plan in place for each secondary building to be covered. We already had techs in there. There are other individuals that can assist with that process that is part of the plan. It depends on the neediness of the device. It could be something very simple that a lot of people could handle. It could be something where it's broken, it needs to be sent in, replaced, taken care of, and there's a plan in that for that as well.
So you're comfortable with the amount of staff that we have now in the tech department to handle this?
Well, as you remember, we had to reduce the tech in the budget, and we're going to evaluate how we do in the next three months and determine where the needs really are. Obviously, middle school is very different than high school as far as where the needs will be, and we will take them, building by building, and determine, do we need additional help in one building over another, et cetera? But we need a little time to kind of work through that data.
Okay. As it relates to the Chromebook agreement for students, I have two concerns with the draft before us, especially when they're going to minors. The second bullet under the student handbook indicates, "I will abide by the policies of the West Orange Public Schools as well as abide by all local, state, and federal laws." Is that realistic for our students?
Yes, they are very well aware. We meet with the students, we review the policies with them. So there's conversations that they understand what they are, what they can, what they cannot do. So, and again, this isn't something new, it's just we're now taking them home. So they still have to abide by those policies when they're using it in the school, during the school day. The challenge is the person who may be using it that's not the student at home and making sure there's monitoring. Now, we have plenty of apps that are allowing us to monitor the devices, and the issue is that we will be collecting devices to see how things are going and what's on devices, things like that. There'll be a schedule that's set up, and we'll work through that. Right now, the key is deployment, but to answer your question, yes, we're very comfortable. And the thing that, you know, we have to realize, it's like us, we all have our iPhones, students do as well, so this is not new to them. They're used to having devices like this, and they really do take care of them very well.
Okay. The second concern I had under the student's responsibility for the Chromebook agreement would be the one, two, three, four, fifth bullet down. I accept responsibility up to and including the cost of replacing the equipment if the device is lost or intentionally damaged. I could certainly see that under the parent's side of it, but getting a minor to agree to accept the cost of replacement, I don't think is realistic.
Well, the issue is that the parent's not in charge of it. And again, this goes back to working, having in other places, other districts doing things and learning from other people. We know that the responsibility is the student. You know, obviously, a sixth grader versus a tenth grader, eleventh grader is a different level of responsibility, but this is something that is, both parties are very well aware of. And again, knowing that we've done this before and where the problems could be, this is not one of them. Students treat these devices very well, they understand it. There's accidents that are going to happen, and that's what we want the students to come forward and explain, and we'll help them, we'll take care of them. We need to remember that this is a tool to learn, it's a device to learn, and we want to treat it that way, but there's also a responsibility that goes with it. And, you know, it's, again, it's a comparison to what they have in their pocket, their bookbag, what we have in our pockets. You know, we treat it the same way, we want to be respectful to the students and have them have the responsibility.
Bullet point of the parent guardian as well.
Well, no, I could understand the parents owning the fact they have to pay for it, but I think asking a twelve-year-old to be responsible is going to be kind of strange.
Well, again, we're just trying to create that level of responsibility so they, because they have it most of the time.
Okay. Well, then, I understand that, again, asking a twelve-year-old to come up with money is just bizarre.
Thank you. Any further questions by the board?
Mr. Robertson? I think it's great that everyone's going to have one. The biggest concern I have is monitoring where, what's, where, sites that people use. And is there an ability to be able to do this remotely versus actually taking physical units? I mean, that's very labor-intensive, and as opposed to, given the fact that there are devices that, I don't believe it's Big Brother, but we're giving it to them, we're telling them their specific app sites that they can go to, and that we have the ability as a district to kind of just run through and see where everyone's going because of the potential liability of, you know, I don't even want to contemplate some of the things that could happen.
It's, the filtering system can always, you know, they can get through it. Kids are very smart and very tech-savvy. We have upgraded the filtering system, but the answer is yes, we can, but when you read it, you notice that the Big Brother Act, we indicate that we have the ability, but we will not exercise that right. We will do spot checking and random taking the devices for that purpose, and it'll be done everywhere. But part of that is going to be the conversation which has been had with the students about, let's talk about what this device is for and what it's not for. And what we have found, it's usually not the student who's going to a place they shouldn't go, it's usually somebody else in the family or, you know, somebody else. And so that's our challenge, and then it's teaching the student about, this is your device and you're responsible for it, and when somebody else does that, you are still be held accountable for it. So the answer is that that's part of this initial stage that we will continue, and all of us have that same concern.
Right, and I guess we're, I want to differentiate with the Big Brother, I'll equate it to Gmail. So as, I don't know if people realize, when you use Gmail or Yahoo Mail, it doesn't really matter, they're looking for words, they're looking for phrases, nobody, Google, Alphabet, they couldn't care less what you're writing, they're looking for phrases and inappropriate phrases. And I guess that's where my concern is, I, you know, if we're going to go collect, we're really being reactive, and we don't even know, we may pick the right one, and there are a lot of kids, a lot of kids. So I'm just saying, is there a way to just have, you know, have the data in mega-data and say, if someone goes to a site or looks for this word, or, you know, whatever it is, you know, oh, that means it goes to someone in the IT department and says, okay, we got to pick up this, we have to look at this person's Chromebook and then just see what's going on.
Yes, yes, on all of what you said. And, you know, the other thing is, the bigger challenge, they've been using the devices, so when a student is sitting in here, they could go anywhere they want, but our filter blocks them from doing that.
Exactly.
So, again, that's the piece that I'm saying, that we just have to have a little patience initially, and let's get it out, let's work through some of the smaller things, and then... We do have the ability to push things out onto every device at any time we need to, and there are red flags that can be seen. So yes to everything that you're asking, but that's going to be one of those, let's get it out, let's get it, and let's see how things are, and then we'll reevaluate.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Mr. Robertson?
Well, just having experienced getting one home, signing the agreement and going through all that, I think it was a well-thought-out process. I know that there are always going to be some glitches in initial rollout of stuff, and that's just part of, that's just part of how it goes. But I got to tell you, when we got the Chromebook home, it didn't work, but the next day, I mean, Joelle comes home with the replacement, it was not a big deal, and kept on moving. I do think in general, though, most of the kids that I'm aware of, and I don't have any data on this, already have access to smartphones or iPads or similar tablets. And I think that there's a larger issue we should explore. We do have filters and we can push out different apps and controls as well as do the spot checks. But I think there's a learning, there's a teachable moment that we need to more fully explore, and that's about cyber safety, and really doing a structured cyber safety program which would have not only to do with making sure that they're going to appropriate places, but protecting themselves from cyber predators, protecting themselves from cyber bullying, what to do if, and the cyber bullying actually starts early. I'm not going to go into detail, but there were things I detected in fourth and fifth grade. And so I think that that would be very, very helpful, and it should be a parent-child-together learning experience, so that they're taking this journey together and the parent knows how to best reinforce it. And at that point, you can also teach the parents how to properly track where their children are visiting. Not all parents are on top of that, or necessarily know how to log into their kid's phone whether or not the kid wants them to.
Computer savvy, so...
Yeah, so...
Totally agree with everything you're saying, and that's one of the things that we talked about, that you're right, we need to protect them from themselves sometimes. And that's exactly, so we're all on board, exactly what you're indicating, and getting the training, and making training available through webinars and different things as well for parents who can't come to meetings and can't do things.
Right, if, yeah, if it's available for both, so those who aren't comfortable, who want that kind of hands-on, in-person instruction can take advantage of it, and those who are comfortable with the webinars and like the convenience of it can take advantage of it. But I would even have them sign off on something then, that you've gone through this, you've checked this off, and you need like a little review sheet or something to kind of verify that they've at least, you know, touched upon the subject matter.
Right, absolutely.
Absolutely. We can put it right at the website, yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Mr. Charles?
Just real quick, Mr. Rosky, can you explain the process for if it's lost or stolen or if it breaks?
Sure. If it's stolen, they need to get a police report, and that's really key, because that's part of the insurance plan, is that a, when we submit it, it has, there has to be a police report that was submitted. So that's one. If it's damaged, obviously, you know, we're going to do the investigation we need to do to determine, but again, from doing this before, there's very few that aren't taken care of well. There are, there are going to be situations that the device is not respected and not understood that it's property of the West Orange Public Schools, so we'll deal with those on small case by case. But that kind of thing, we have a plan set up, the students know it, that was part of our discussion with them, is that if this would happen, exactly what Mr. Robertson was saying, that the Chromebook went home, it didn't work, the next day, came in, there was a plan in place, the child knew what to do, and it was replaced, and we figured out we're doing one not working. So that's all laid out, and we'll remind the students, again, it's going to take a little time to get into the flow of things, but, you know, after a couple of weeks here, it'll be pretty standard.
Mr. Rosky, I have a follow-up. I just thought of it, a lot of our students don't have internet access at home. Do the devices have an internal hotspot, or will they be given hotspots?
They do not. Now, one of the things that we've started to investigate is companies that are willing to work with us and do things with us. So the hardest part is identifying, number one, and sometimes it's easier to have the student help us on whether they have internet at home or not. And, you know, through simple conversations with kids, we know who has it and who does not have it, and then we can address that on a case-by-case basis. But we have been looking at that, and we've had some individuals indicate to us they'd like to work with us on, once we get that figure or that number in neighborhoods and schools and so on. I would think within a couple of months, we're going to be in a pretty good position to say the following, the number of kids in this school do not have it, and here's how we're helping them and helping their families.
Okay, I see a lot of kids still at the West Orange Public Library borrowing the computers there, so I know there's a significant population that do not have internet access at home.
No question.
Thank you.
Just one follow-up on that. They actually did send a form home, so you could check off whether or not you have access to the internet, and then it asks you just to follow up with a conversation and to work with how to help in that regard. The only thing I don't remember is if the form was bilingual, so that may be something to look at.
I think it's available, but again, that's going to be one of those that, let's get the device out, let's get the kinks out, and then let's really go attack that piece so we know who needs the help.
Thank you, Mr. Rosky.
The town has the capability to provide us with Wi-Fi spots, like unless, you know, we know Starbucks has it, but West Orange doesn't have Starbucks. The mayor does, you know, the public library does, but I think if the town should be able to provide us with a list of Wi-Fi spots, that would certainly help us.
We are looking into that as well, and talking to the town about other companies providing that free of charge and seeing what we can do. Again, that is a very large task, we've got a lot of moving pieces to that, so we want to get the devices out, get them used, and then we'll take on those other ones.
Thank you.
Okay, just a very quick update on the special ed audit. We had the meeting last Wednesday at Liberty, and we had a nice turnout. The auditors indicated there was some very good feedback and very consistent feedback, which is always good to hear. If you remember, on the first day, the staff came back, we had the paraprofessionals and the child study team members, the counselors, all the special ed teachers meet by level, and they provided the feedback to the auditors. Well, the surveys are out there, and there's been a couple of situations with surveys that, for some reason, it went to Spanish when they ended with it, or they wouldn't let them finish. We have helped those individuals work through that. The one thing that we have told some of the parents, though, is they tried to do the survey a second time, and once you do it, it will not let you do it a second time, so it kicks you off. And so a couple of conversations were in that vein, that, did you already do it? Yes, and this is why that happened. So, again, we're working through some of those. We have a couple of more individuals that requested to have the individual or small group meetings with the auditors, which we're trying to finalize, and then we're very close to having... And then we're very close to having all the data collected that we need to. The administrators have provided their feedback, and supervisors, et cetera. So we're close to having the auditors have what they need to do. And then they'll take the time, put the report together, and then that will be coming to the board for that report. We're hoping it's ready for October. Being that it's an early meeting, I believe it's the 16th of October is the next meeting. It may not be ready for that, it will certainly be ready for the November. But I'll let you know as we move closer and talk to it.
Thank you.
Okay, every year, we have to complete what's called a self-assessment. The group that completes this, every building has to complete the self-assessment. And that is done by the safety slash climate team in each building. That's made up of different staff members in each building. And they have to go through what are called core elements, which was indicated, or excuse me, which was developed by the Department of Ed through the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights Act. And so what I have done is provided you each school and each core element, there's eight total. And then under each core element, there are indicators based on the core element. The maximum score you can receive for each indicator is three. The lowest score is zero. So what happens is the, this team goes through, evaluates this, sends it to our Director of Guidance here in the high school, Ms. Butler. This is all put together. And then it is submitted to the Department of Ed after it is board-approved. So it's on the agenda tonight for the approval, each school. Once it is submitted with a statement of assurance from me, saying that it went through the board and that the board approved it at a board meeting, we then submit it. Somewhere in January, February, they come back to all school districts in New Jersey with the grade. And for instance, you know, with Gregory, I believe it was 75. So when they get back to us and verify that, yes, Gregory has a score of 75, we then have 10 days to post that on the district website and each school's website. And that stays there until the following year. And we go through this process again, and then the new score would be put up there. Now, this document, how we use it in West Orange, is this really kind of drives what we do in our buildings based on the level. But as well, what we need to do differently, if we're seeing patterns, whether it be in an individual school, across the seven elementaries, or the three middle schools, we look for those kinds of patterns. And then we try to put training in place, or programs in place, that would address some of these areas. This is now the fifth year this is going on. And obviously, much smoother as far as what is expected and how it's supposed to be done. But the idea is something as simple as, when the website went down in one of the schools, we lost the grade for one of the schools. And nobody realized it. And so when the team went in to say, okay, what's our grade posted on our website? There was no grade for that one school. So they had to indicate that it was a one, even though it was put up there prior to. So we called the state, and they said, if we can verify that it was posted before, that score can be changed. So, you know, a lot of this really is, you know, and I talked to Ms. Butler, and she talks to the teams, and meets with them, and reviews things with them. And what's important is we have some commonality of what does this element, what does this indicator really mean? And so she has met with the teams and kind of gone through of what it really is. So we're not having one idea in one school, and another idea in another school.
Thank you, Mr. Rosky. Just have a couple of questions. I noticed, as you mentioned, there is some commonality. And in particular, the professional development and effective practices of successful school climate programs. Pretty much, a lot of the schools have the number one. And is that one of the issues you're referring to?
Go ahead.
If you look at, the elementary schools all graded themselves all ones. Yet the middle schools and the high schools all graded themselves three, three. So either we didn't provide it, or that somewhere, there's this.
All right, so, and again, this is for this current year that we just finished. So what happened was that some of the elementary schools, we, there is training provided, and it's outside training, it's not done in the district, it's done by the state. The middle schools took advantage of that and sent their team, or portions of their team. And some of the elementary schools did not. That's one of the things that I've spoken to the group about. And tomorrow at the principal's meeting, we, this is one of the items that we're breaking down and really identifying those patterns. So we can clearly make sure that the elementary team gets a chance to have that training, discuss things, and go from there.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Mr. Schorchbaum?
So I noticed the consistency, as Mr. Charles pointed out. So one school, I believe it was Hazel. Hazel said they did. So Hazel, for the professional development, they got a two, and all the others got one. So is this, were they sent for training, were they not? Is this very subjective?
That piece is that they can do some in-house training. They can bring people in to talk about different things. So maybe Hazel did that once, and maybe the others did not. You know, that's that whole thing. So at tomorrow's meeting, the conversation's going to be, okay, so what are we doing to make sure that that's all taken care of?
Thank you. Anyone?
What is considered below the minimum level in, out of 78?
There is no minimum. The bottom line is, we would like to have threes in every indicator. But again, we ask them to make sure they're honest. And then we can, we use that for the following year about what we need to improve.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't below.
No, we're not.
Minimum level.
We're not.
Thank you.
Okay, and let me just give you the one HIV case. As you know, from the last board meeting, we did not have any HIV cases, because it's the summer. So since the school year has started until now, we've had this one investigation.
Thank you.
Okay, just a couple of quick things. We have back-to-school nights coming up very soon. Next, tomorrow is Edison. The middle schools were last week, the high schools coming up, the elementary schools are coming up. What we did for our preschool, well, no, sorry, for Kelly School, is that we've started the back-to-school night at 6:00 PM. And what mostly elementary schools have is that they have their teachers do two sessions, usually about 30 minutes long. So if I have a child in fifth grade and in first grade, I can go to my first child's for the quick, and then I can get off to the next one. So basically, it's about an hour long, and they do two different sessions, which allows parents. If you have three children, then they make a special meeting set up at a different time to kind of do that. But what we've been able to do at Kelly, because we had our students move in from Redwood and Gregory, we want to make sure we're respectful to them, because the parents have never been to Kelly. So we're starting at 6 o'clock to give those parents who have children in other schools the opportunity to come out of Kelly, see their child, and then go to the other school to attend back-to-school. So the other schools for elementary will begin at 7:00 PM, and Kelly will begin at 6:00 PM. Just for that reason. And we didn't have an issue before, because the parents were comfortable in the schools, because the kids had been there more than one year. We don't anticipate this needing to happen again, but we'll take that year by year and figure out what's best for the parents as far as back-to-school night. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rosky.
Just one quick question. I apologize, I forgot to ask this earlier. When we were talking about the Chromebooks, I forgot to mention that one of the things a couple of parents asked about, and they were actually both engineers, two engineer moms, noted that while it's, the Chromebook rollout's going to make it easier in terms of implementing a lot of classroom exercises, teamwork, and a whole lot of things, because you can collaborate in Google, that we're not teaching, originally, we were supposed to have access to, not just access to, but teaching the Microsoft Office productivity programs, which are still the world's number-one productivity software. And when kids go to college, if they're doing stats or whatever, they're going to normally be executing a Microsoft Excel, they're going to be working, the Word and PowerPoint are different from the Google. And we've had reports from parents, because kids also went off to college, that they had to wait till they got there to really learn it, because we didn't teach it. So I don't know, we were supposed to be doing that via the 365, since that's browser-based. So they could still utilize it even on the Chromebook. So that's something that, you know, would be great to look into, because it's not happening.
Yeah, we'll definitely have that conversation and see where we are in that process.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Thank you. Okay, are there any questions on the agenda from the public? If you have a question on the agenda, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. There's a three-minute timer on the clock to allow everyone time to ask a question or make a comment.
Good evening, Sandra White, 16 Funders Road. It's about the Chromebooks. In the classroom, like if something happens to the kid, it was working in one room, but come to another room, and it's not working. Whose responsibility, like are the kids going to go out to IT in the middle of the class, because it's not working, or is the teacher going to stop and try to, you know, diagnose what's going on? And then the other one is, when you say if they're broken, like, you know, Mr. Robertson's daughter got one right away. But going forward, in November, December, if the unit has to be sent out, are there going to be loners for the student if it has to go out? Are there enough on premises that they have?
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions on the agenda? Please come forward, sir.
Hi, my name is David Suarez. The address is 19 Arverne Road, A R B E R N E, Arverne Road. I'm the father of two special ed kids who attend St. Cloud. And this is a question for Mr. Rosky regarding the update on the special ed audit. Is, when do you expect to have it ready? Will you share it with us? And also, what's the approach you plan to follow in terms of the recommendations they make to you or the board? Which ones will you implement, and which ones will you disregard? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Suarez. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Rosky.
Ms. Green, the answer is that it depends on, sorry, Ms. White, the, sorry. The answer is, it just depends on what it is. We don't want teachers to stop teaching and doing that kind of thing. But it depends on the situation. There are people going to be available in all buildings to kind of help. But we have to kind of work through that one, because we don't want to interrupt instruction. We don't want to take five minutes where the teacher's working with something, and the other kids are not doing what they're supposed to do. As far as loners, we have plenty of loners. And we're going to be kind of tracking each building about what's happening, what's not. I can tell you from experience that the middle schools do not, as much as people think that the middle school kids will have more problems, they usually don't. They treat them very differently. We have a very important case, that when they move from one class to the other, they're going to make sure it's put in there. Many times, when they're traveling, hallways are busy, they get bumped, it falls down, it cracks and doesn't work anymore. The cases will help us with that process. But it's the high school that we need to monitor and kind of see what's happening. So, you know, another month from now, we'll have a better understanding of how we're going to handle that period-to-period kind of thing, when it's not working. But we also want to make sure that we're not, that this isn't the end-all, be-all. And that if they don't have it, they can't, you know, have instruction and be part of the class. All right? Mr. Suarez, as far as the audit, the auditing firm will put together a document, a report, based on all of the feedback and all of the findings. And they will submit that to me, and then I will submit that to the board. And we will have a presentation at the public board meeting based on their findings. And they will report things that we're doing very well as a district, and things that we can improve. As soon as we have that document, within a month, we'll go ahead and create action plans. The administrative team, along with the, those directly involved with whatever the finding is, it could be the child study team, it could be the teachers, et cetera. We'll work together and create an action plan of how we're going to address that finding or that area of improvement. And we'll come back and determine, over a period of time, continue to reevaluate, are we making the progress we need to make?
Thank you, Mr. Rosky. May I have a motion, please, for a fresh reading of the four board policies below?
I'll second.
Any discussion by the board?
Okay. Since this is a first reading, I'll be very brief with what is going on here. Starting with Board Policy 3510, Operation and Maintenance of Plant. This is basically an added section regarding safe drinking water. It's assuring the availability of safe drinking water and complying with the Quality Assurance Project Plan. Any questions from the board, or you want to hold questions for second reading?
We read it, and some, there's a lot of redundancies. Because there was a lot of coming and pasting from the NGA and the existing policies. So go through and eliminate the redundancies.
You're talking redundancy again? Got it, okay. Yes, school board is kind of special that way. Okay. Board Policy 3516 on safety. First, there is a posting of a 48-hour notice now regarding when hazardous substances will be used during a construction phase. Additionally, also under compliance with the Safe Drinking Water Act, there's a new section regarding pipe and water testing and drinking water analysis. And just to confirm, our board did the testing prior to it being mandated. Mr. Calavano, how are we doing on reimbursement?
Still waiting from the state.
Is the check going to be in the mail?
I hope so.
All right, because the legislator did have the epiphany that some districts actually were proactive, checked their water prior to them allowing for allocated funds. And then finally, someone said, oh, let's pay those districts back. So we're waiting.
Waiting.
Got it, thanks. And again, I do want to thank Assemblyman McKeon for his assistance, because initially, the estimates for testing the water at that time, kind of like gas prices right now, they're through the roof, because there's an issue in the Gulf. And all of a sudden, you know, everybody was like, oh, let's test water. And the testing estimates were extremely high. And John came through and found somebody quite more reasonable for us. Correct, Mr. Rosky?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks. Got it. Okay. School meal program errors, Policy 3542.2. This is a policy-defining process when accounts are due to the district. This past year, we had $28,000 that was due to the district for lunches that were not paid. We did, as any other policy, that is directly under the authority, if you will, of a particular supervisor. We shared this with Sodexo, we asked them what their recommendations are. We're setting a threshold now for notification for $20 to be, if it's deficient, for the accounts to go from Mr. Calavano, to then contact the principal, and then try to collect. However, that being said, we will still be allowing those with deficient balances to be provided a meal. Okay. Board Policy 5141.4, Missing, Abused, and Neglected Children. This supplements the section regarding due process with details regarding allegations that are found to be true. And that is that. Madam President.
Thank you. First reading?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schorchbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes.
May I have a motion, please, for personnel, letter A, 1 to 4?
And the addendum.
And the addendum. I'll second.
Any discussion by the board?
Can you discuss?
Mr. Robertson seconded.
Can you discuss the building and ground stipends, what they're for?
I'm sorry, which ones, Mr. Schwartzbaum?
So in their contract, in their contract, if they hold a black seal license or a forklift license, and there's other stipends for locks with the journeyman, they're entitled to payment. So this is the list of the individuals that will receive those stipends.
What is a black seal license?
It's to operate the boilers, to maintain the boilers.
Oh, okay.
It's really a boiler's license.
Okay.
Just as in some other districts, they require the principal to have a black seal license. So in the event that a custodian is not there to open the building, the principal can because you must have somebody with that license to open your building. Do our principals have black seal licenses?
I do not believe so.
Okay, little PD there, huh?
Why he was here, you should have asked him.
Electrician.
A journeyman, there's a journeyman apprentice, the apprentice is, the journeyman is the master of the trade.
All right, prompt information, Mr. Charles.
Mr. Rosky, I have a couple of questions. On the school business trips, I note that the guidance counselors are going for college board workshop.
President Mordecai, we're still on personnel.
I thought that was under personnel as well. No? Trips, I'm sorry, that's under business.
Curriculum.
Sorry. Okay. I'm moving ahead, I'm sorry. Okay. I have two abstentions, so let's.
Mr. Charles? Personnel. Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
And President Mordecai?
Yes, and abstaining from Joanne Duncan and Vina Wallace Johnson as they donated to my campaign.
In many of the personnel, it relates to the Betty Madalena School. If we could, at some point, accumulate all of the personnel in the school and compare it to where we have budgeted in the budget for it.
Thank you. Okay. Curriculum and instruction, may I please have a motion for that? And I don't have a question. Thank you. May I have a second?
And that's with the addendum?
Yes, that is with the addendum. Now I may ask my question. As to the trips for the guidance counselors, Council Workshop Montclair State, School Counselor for Hesse Training Institute and College Board Workshop. I know a parent had asked me if we also send our guidance counselors up to national training as well so that they're able to gain more insight on what's doing nationally and to bring best practices back to our district.
Yes, they're welcome to do that. It's something that we talked about last year when we evaluated the program. So I think you'll be seeing more of that. We have to be careful because their role is very important. And being at a national conference is something that, you know, obviously, we can't do like when we send them out for a day to a college. We have three or four people. But yes, the answer is yes, that is something we'll be looking at this year.
Yes, we could always send a couple and have them turnkey whatever and then they get back, right? Okay. Thank you, sir. Any other discussion, may I?
I just have one question, Mr. Rosky. The trips that the high school U.S. History is taking to the Essex County Courthouse, is this what Richard Trank set up last year?
Yes, we, I think it was two years ago, actually. So we run it through the social studies department here. And the supervisor, Steve Oshowski, coordinates it with the judges and Mr. Trank to get all of our sophomores to attend. It's a very, very positive experience. Kids really enjoyed it and we have a lot of reflection and feedback and tied back into lessons within the school day.
It was very nice of Mr. Trank to set this up because I know the kids really, and I remember talking to Steve Oshowski, he was like, this hit it out of the park for the kids.
Yeah, yeah. Now, it's a lot of work from him and some of his partners, so we greatly appreciate what he does.
Any further questions by the board? I have one follow-up to share with the board. I asked Mr. Rosky this question earlier. But a few years ago, we had approved an RTI program and I believe it was approximately $700,000. I asked for an update of that program, so he says he will get the information and get back to us because we're now approving an early start intervention program. So that led me to ask again because I've asked a few times.
Yes, we, I spoke to Ms. Granada and we'll get something squared away for the October meeting. If the presentation with the special ed audit is October, then we'll move it to November. But the difference here is this is before school, where the program is tied into interventions within the school day. This is helping students prior to school starting. Many of the students are already at Washington and Hazel, so we're able to provide them with some additional help.
Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes.
May I have a motion, please, for C Finance 1 to 5 and Business Office 1 through 11?
I'll move back.
I'll second.
Thank you. I'd just like to note the many donations we received over the past couple of weeks. It was, we received a donation from Ira Tarnow for two complete sets of golf clubs, inclusive of bags for the athletic department. And also from the World Organization for Positive Action. We received backpacks for both Washington and Hazel schools. 160 backpacks for Washington, 130 for Hazel. And from the West Orange Rotary and the West Orange African Heritage Organization, they donated backpacks to Kelly Schools, 140 backpacks total. In addition, Marley Diaz and the Grassroots Community Foundation. Marley Diaz, as everybody knows, is a West Orange student. She's now in middle school. But she had an initiative a couple of years ago to collect a thousand books. She's since collected about 8,000 books. And she's donated 80 books to Washington School and 80 books to Hazel. And she's donated a number of other books to St. Cloud and other schools in the district. So we thank Ms. Diaz and Grassroots for that donation. Also, Life Christian Church, parishioners plus day life program donated 250 backpacks to district students. So we thank everyone for their donations, it's very well appreciated. Roll call, Mr. Calavano?
Sure. Mr. Calavano, on to business item number seven. Can you tell us how you got you that figure for the Esse grant?
Oh, it's given to us by the state.
Okay, so just here it is and that's what you get?
Yeah.
Thanks.
If it was up to us, we'll go a lot more.
It was an odd number, so I had to ask. It was like, where'd they come up with that?
Thankfully, another, a mandate where we actually get some funds. Typically, we don't get funds for mandates. Roll call, Mr. Calavano?
Mr. Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lab?
Yes.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes.
So on item number two, where, for the extended school year, where we, as a district, received funds from Irvington. One of the things I think we should try to do, and I would recommend that we create a subcommittee of the board, is to really look at what the costs are, our actual costs are for special ed and anything else that whether we're accounting for all of the full costs that we can charge other districts. Internally, it's really not, it doesn't matter because whether it's in one budget line item or not, it's not really relevant. But when we're going to other districts, we need to show the accounting. So I would recommend that we have a subcommittee to work with John, as well as the outside orders, that we make sure that we are, that we have a full cost accounting on these things.
The board will take that recommendation on our advisement and will discuss further unless you have approval here from the colleagues. But I think I'd like to think about that some more. Anyone else? Okay, we moved seconded and we voted already, Mr. Calavano.
Yeah.
So the next item is reports. May I have a motion, please, for a letter D?
I'll move back.
Thank you. Second? Mr. Calavano?
Wait, that question won't shift. Mr. Rosky, on your discussion regarding the HIV and acknowledging that there was a glitch on one of the school's websites, we're approving a number that is not reflective of the okay from the DOE to correct the problem. I believe it was St. Cloud School, under the indicator, letter B, it's still listed one. What did DOE give us because we're approving the total score of 72, which is reflection of one?
We have to, the cases, when they go to do the evaluation, they look on the website and it was not there. We have to prove that it was there prior to for that score to go up. So the issue is that we would just amend that score for St. Cloud if we can show that it was on there.
Okay, all right, so, got it. How are you going to do that?
I don't know. We've been talking about it for a couple of days and we're trying to figure out if we can go back in history, which I think we can. So right now, we're focused on deployment of Chromebooks, but we believe we can go back and look at the history.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Calavano?
Charles?
Yes.
Mrs. Lab?
Yep.
Mr. Robertson?
Yes.
Vice President Schwartzbaum?
Yes.
President Mordecai?
Yes.
Now it's time for a report from board president and then board members. Does anyone have a report to give? I'll start with you, Mr. Charles.
I just have, I just wanted to commend and invite everyone who has not seen the band show this year. It's titled Rome. I got a chance to see it at the football game on Friday night. Like I said, the theme is Rome, it's complete with Roman columns, it's complete with opera music from Puccini. And a wonderful job the kids do performing, et cetera. So I invite everybody to at least come to a football game or come see the band perform this year because it's a fantastic show.
When is the next football game?
The next home game is in...
Saturday at Columbia High School. One o'clock.
And when is our next home game? I know Mr. Charles would know that.
The following Thursday, Thursday evening.
Yes, against Bloomfield.
And all games start at seven?
Columbia is one o'clock on Saturday afternoon.
Mr. Ball?
Well, actually, I'm going to kick this back over to Mr. Rosky. October 9th, we're having a dedication for the Betty Madalena School. Do you want to discuss that a little bit?
Sure. We've begun to discuss the dedication that will happen for Betty. Those that don't know, she was a director of special services along with other roles in the district for a long time, many years. And the school has been named after her and the dedication will happen October 9th at 6:00 PM at the Betty Madalena Early Learning Center. We are looking to put something together as far as a fundraiser to purchase a playground for the students to use as well as the students who attend Life Christian Church. We'll be sending out, before the week is over, we'll be sending out specific invitations to those that knew Betty well, those that are not from West Orange, that knew Betty in a different capacity, as well as the entire staff at. And we'll be putting it all over social media to make sure that those that knew Betty or want to come in, celebrate the dedication for Betty will be in attendance.
And October 9th, our schools are closed for the students. It's a professional development day and it's also Betty's birthday. So it worked out very nicely, so we're going to be doing that that evening. And more information will be coming. Did I say, did I say? Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Yeah, Columbus Day, that was my, did I say something like Better Day or something? Did I mess that up? Okay.
Mr. Schwartzbaum, any reports? Mr. Robertson?
Yes. Attended the pep rally and I saw Ms. Lab and Ms. Mordecai there as well. That was pretty exciting. I mean, the kids really got everybody pumped up. The step routines by the boys and girls step teams, the, basically, all the routines were pretty fun. And I, but I did not know that the girls soccer coach, Mr. Perez, could move like that. He's a rather big fella, but he could definitely move. But that was, it was a lot of fun for everybody.
Every year.
Really, I know. And to what Mr. Charles was saying, the football game, while the football game itself was not as, didn't have all the highlights we liked, the team really put a, had a couple of exciting plays and I think that they're going to improve throughout the season. The band and the color guard kind of stole the show. That was really spectacular theater that they put on, you know, with their Rome theme. And it was awesome. And the cheerleaders were awesome, as always. And of course, on Sunday, we had another wonderful, inspiring run and walk for Akil, the Akil Badlani Foundation. And their continuing efforts to advocate for traffic safety and as well as for music education. And it was very exciting. One of the things I wanted to point out that you've seen out in the hall here are the beautiful benches. The benches were a collaboration between the Badlani Foundation, Akil's Foundation, and Troop Two Eagle, about to be Eagle Scout, Ryan Garja-Rowala, and the West Orange Art Department with big help from Mr. Quagliato, where the scouts built the benches and the art department, the kids then designed the benches to communicate traffic safety themes as well as a musical theme that goes throughout. It really captures the spirit of the foundation and they're just absolutely gorgeous. It was a job very well done, very creative Eagle Scout project too, if I must say. So congratulations to our arts department, Ryan, who will get his eagle officially soon, as well as to the Akil Badlani Foundation. Coming up on Wednesday, the West Orange African Heritage Association is having its first general membership meeting, 7 o'clock at Edison. And as Mrs. Mordecai has noted earlier and we've seen throughout, you know, West Orange African Heritage does so much. I mean, not only donating the backpacks and the STEM program that they do, they do a great mentorship program. They do a tutoring program for elementary school. They do, you know, the career mentorship program, scholarships, donations, just really doing very, just active things in the community. Also, there, because in the advent of the recent challenges that we've seen from, over everything, from Confederate statues to the battles of white supremacists, to, you know, the battle that the Black Lives, Black Lives Matter have been taking on over the past few years, the organization is looking at how it is modernizing its messaging and its outreach to try to remain, to try to find out from you out in the community, what is relevant, what are your needs and how can the organization better support those of African heritage, whether from the Caribbean, whether from Africa, America, the Caribbean, Latin America, et cetera. And so if you want to just come on over and listen or voice your opinion or, and we will be doing surveys and focus groups in the near future to further research what folks really need out in the community and how we can better support African heritage as well as communicating the history and the heritage itself. And that's it.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that I also attended the Badlani event as well as the pep rally and a few others. rally and a few others, but it's already been reported on, but just like to let you know that we've all been very active, even though it's summer and schools only open for a couple of weeks. We, we're all across the district attending quite a bit. I also attended the open house at the Betty Madalena Early Learning Center, and I also attended the open house at Kelly School to welcome the LLD students from both Redwood and Gregory. So that being said, uh, the next board meeting will be October sixteenth, and now we'll take petitions and hearing from the residents. If anyone has a question on anything at all, whether it's on the agenda or not, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. And there's a clock for, a three-minute timer to allow everyone ample time to speak.
Susan Duarte, 14 Cohen Place. I have a question about high school busing. My daughter gets a bus at 6:39. She gets to the high school at 6:55. She sits on the bus until 7:15. I've contacted the Director of Transportation and she said that they could probably move the bus pickup five minutes. It's still keeping teenagers on a bus at the crack of dawn for 15 minutes. It's not time well spent. They get up at the crack of dawn anyway. And teenagers on a bus idling in the high school parking lot, no good can come from that. So just some explanation as to why this can't be changed. Uh, I think it's 3:08.
Thank you, Mrs. Jordan. Mr. Perrier?
Good evening. Tom Perrier, 87, Roswell Avenue, East Orange. I am the president and education chairperson for the NUPACP for Orange as a member. I come before this board this evening because we have made two attempts last year and two attempts this year to have a meeting with your superintendent, and so far, our comments, our requests have been ignored. I know that there are, currently, there are some personal matters that he may be dealing with, but we do expect a response from the superintendent. What we would like to do is have some dates, and if necessary, we can even provide some questions in advance of our meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, Tony Edelstein, 50 Davie Drive. First comment is just for the benefit of Mr. Robertson. I just came back from the boys soccer game, and unfortunately, while they didn't win, Jared did get, uh, in at the end, towards the end of the game, and he played very well right back. Right? Okay, so. They played Melbourne. Uh, we gave up, uh, we got outplayed the first 20 minutes, and then the next 30 or so, we played extremely well, we had them on their heels, and then they got kind of a fluke goal. So, anyway, but, uh, Coach Nevens was very impressed with their, with their performance in the middle of the game. Um, with, with respect to the, um, visits to the courthouse, um, I've gone on them as a high school teacher the last several years, and they have been great learning experiences. The students have had, um, really excellent feedback. They get to watch actual trials, they get to watch sentencing, they get to speak to judges, they get to speak to attorneys, and so it is a marvelous, it is a marvelous program, great learning experience. Uh, in light of, um, the president's, uh, President Trump, uh, recent decision regarding DACA, I think, uh, probably families in our district are affected by that. There is a forum that's being held this Sunday, uh, at Holy Trinity Church on 315 Main Street from 2:00 until 3:00 o'clock. It's being led by Shannon McKinnon, one of our residents, one of our parents, um, who is an immigration attorney, she's also bilingual in Spanish. And I think it would be a terrific service to our families if we could get information out to our families that that forum is being held. I know that some of the ESL teachers in the high school have said that some of their students have spoken to them privately about some of their concerns regarding DACA. As far as the Chromebooks, um, the board has, uh, a number of substantive questions tonight regarding the Chromebooks. So, uh, I'm just, uh, a little disconcerted that those questions are coming after the Chromebooks have been implemented and are being, are being handed out. I thought, uh, a lot of those very good substantive questions should have been addressed, um, before the program was implemented. And just lastly, um, as Ms. Mordecai and I have talked briefly, and I've emailed a number of you, I think all of you, uh, I'd encourage the district to explore, start exploring, looking into, starting high school later. Ms. Duarte following up on, on her comment about when her child gets on the bus. This is starting to happen across the country. Medical research seems to be, uh, outstandingly in support of that high schoolers, uh, teenagers are starting school much too early. I know sports schedules and all that is always the reason, but other districts around the country, uh, seem to have worked it out, and I just think it's something for exploration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edelstein. Anyone else? I guess none, closed public comment. Mr. Rutske?
Mr. Duarte, um, I'll look into your conversation tomorrow. We don't want kids sitting on the bus, no matter what age, so I'll look into that. Um, Mr. Perrier, uh, your attempts were not ignored. So what was he saying? Okay. Then I guess there's no reason to, to discuss it, except the, the attempts were not ignored. I emailed him, uh, twice, um, so they were definitely not ignored. Mr. Edelstein, as far as the, uh, the DACA, we, that's a very slippery slope. Um, we, when we open that door for, um, advertising, things that are, that are not directly related to the district, even though I think it's indirectly related to our students and our families, um, it's a tough one. So let me see what I can do about that one. Uh, and as far as the, uh, high schools starting later, um, you know, there's a lot of discussion at the, at the Trenton level about this and, and looking for different challenges, looking for different ways to explore that.
Thank you, Mr. Rutske. I just want to add that as it's, uh, school's a couple of weeks in, um, I know you have this issue, Mrs. Duarte, but we, we've not had a whole lot of complaints as far as buses. So, yeah, yeah. It's just too early. I, I, I understand, but I'm just saying kudos to, to our transportation, new transportation director, that usually by this time, we've had quite a few complaints, and, and that hasn't been the case this year. So, uh, good, good job, Elena.
Yeah, no, we, we, again, we, uh, Mr. Calavano and I have, uh, addressed some of those things. I've gone out, looked at sites where parents have requested, uh, you know, if it's something that's doable and it's safe, I mean, it makes sense, and we clearly are trying to work with parents. If, uh, somebody wants door-to-door and, uh, the bus stop, they have to walk, you know, a little bit down, uh, the answer is no, we don't provide door-to-door unless there's a specific reason for that. But this seems like a simple one, but just let me look into it before I make any promises.
Thank you, Mr. Rutske. Any other comments? Mr. Slav?
Just one closing, um, for all those who are observing, I want to wish you all a very Happy New Year.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Go on.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Happy New Year, everyone.